Good afternoon and welcome to the May 10, 2023 Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Budget Overview Workshop. This is a first in a series of workshops we will have throughout the budget process. And before I pass things over to county administrator for opening remarks, I want to say Commissioner Pat Kemp will not be with us today. She is home ill, so we wish her the very best. With that, Bonnie, you want to give some opening remarks?
Thank you. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this is the first of three budget workshops for the fiscal year 24 recommended budget workshop. And I will present my recommended budget to you at your July 12 board meeting, at your regular board meeting. This workshop today will provide an overview of the budget, including how funding is allocated amongst various uses in the budget as a whole, as well as a concentration on the two general funds, the countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund, because those are the two funds that the board has the most discretion in your spending. Kevin Brickie, Director of Management and Budget, will also discuss five-year projections of the two funds, and it will include both revenue assumptions as well as the expenditure assumptions. And these projections will be framed by expectations regarding various economic conditions in the present and the future, which he will go through as well. And he'll discuss those expectations during his presentation. So with that, we'll turn it over to Kevin Brickie for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Director of Management and Budget. As Bonnie said, this is the first workshop for the FY '24, FY '25 two-year budget process, and I'll delve right into the presentation. So often, the most important revenue assumption is regarding property taxes, which are set by our taxable values and millage rates. And this is a graph looking at the history of taxable value since FY '03. One can see the large declines in 8, 9, 10, 11 area. And for FY '23, our growth rate was about 15.3%. That was the highest in 16 years. It's above our average long-run growth rate, which is about 5.7%. We expect growth in taxable values and thus property taxes to still be strong for FY '24, weakening a little bit, perhaps to about 14.5%. That's looking at state forecasts as well as our own views. And what we have is the economy is slowing somewhat. Housing markets have already slowed. Housing sales have been declining since last summer, and prices have slowed in growth to about 2.9% or so. And so we do expect to see a slightly slower rate in ad valorem growth. In FY '25, we expect that it will slow even more with expectations of a recession that is considered somewhat likely, and we'll be talking about that as well. This graph looks at taxable values over that same time. You can see the decline again through FY '09 to FY '12. The previous peak had been in FY '08. It took 11 years to exceed that peak, and that occurred in FY '20. So the economy. The economy is kind of in an interesting spot right now. Job growth or the labor markets are still fairly tight, and inflation is still rather high. The inflation rate peaked in March at about 9.1% over the year. That's the highest inflation rate we've had since the early 80s. Today, the April inflation rate was released this morning, and it was down to 4.9%. On this graph, we have through March at 5%, 4.9%. There's certainly progress with inflation receding some, but it's still considered high and certainly higher than the Fed targets, which is somewhere in the 2%, 2.5% range. And as a result, you know, the Fed has been raising interest rates since March of 2022. There have been 10 increases from 0.25% to 5.25%. The last rate increase was a quarter percent last month, and that happened even as labor markets were starting to soften a little bit and even as some banks had difficulty. So the Fed is still focused on the tight labor markets, and that feeds into some of the expectations that we'll be talking about for the economy. This is looking at the Hillsborough County unemployment rate. It's 2.5%. It's still very low. You can see the spikes during the last recessions, the spike during the pandemic shutdown. So it is still low. Labor markets are still tight. However, they are starting to soften a little bit. This is looking at U.S. job openings. You can see job openings have tended to be in the 5 or 6 billion range over the last few years. They've peaked at somewhere around 12 million, and for the first time since 2021, job openings have dipped below 10 million. There's still a lot of job openings, but it is starting to turn a bit. Average job growth in the last three months has been about 222,000 nationwide. That's the lowest level since 2021, and jobless claims have been rising. Initial jobless claims have been rising for the last 11 months. This is looking at Florida job openings. Similar picture. They've been quite strong, peaking somewhere in the neighborhood of 700,000 to 800,000, and they have come off that peak. We're seeing some early signs of the labor market softening. It's still tight, but it seems to be turning some. And it shows up even in hourly earnings. Hourly earnings have tended to rise somewhere in the 2% to 3% range during the last number of months. It's been rising more in the 5% to 6% range. It has again declined over the last six or seven months, receding more towards 4%, which is still strong. But again, looking at all those labor market indicators, there is some evidence of some softening in the labor market. Then looking at the economy as a whole, this is the Leading Economic Indicators Index. Looks at a broad range of economic activity and creates a composite index. And this composite index in blue shows the change compared to a year ago. And those light gray bars are recessions, the last three recessions. So the leading economic indicators have always declined in a broad and a sustained and a relatively deep fashion prior to recessions. Right now, the Leading Economic Indicators has declined for the last 12 months. That has traditionally been a signal of a recession that would follow shortly thereafter. It usually does not send a false signal. Certainly, economics has become a more interesting and challenging profession since the last great recession and through the pandemic, but things probably haven't changed that much as far as economics are concerned. And so this is certainly a sign that a recession seems likely to be coming. Another indicator that usually signals a recession is the yield curve. This curve is what we call inverted, meaning that it slopes downward instead of slopes upwards. This is looking at, on the left, these are treasury securities, U.S. bonds, U.S. treasury notes, short-term interest rates for a short-term, three-month treasury bill, and then that's on the left, and then on the right, a 30-year bond. Usually, interest rates for longer periods are higher. There's more risk inherent in it. Over 30 years, a lot can happen to an issuer. Over three months, usually not much. So usually, this curve slopes upwards. Right now, it's inverted, meaning that investors are anticipating that short-term rates will be rising, but they're anticipating that long-term rates are likely to fall. Why? Because they're expecting the economy to be weaker in the future, and thus, interest rates in the future coming down. Since 1955, the yield curve, I think, has inverted. There have been 10 recessions. The yield curve has always inverted before that. There's been one false signal. A study showed since 1900, there have been, I think, 28 times that the yield curve has inverted over an expanded period, and 22 times a recession has followed. But in the last half-century or so, there's only been one false signal. So both of these seem to be signals of a recession coming. Forecasters are expecting it to be relatively mild, that it would occur sometime perhaps in late calendar '23, early calendar '24. Even those who have a more positive outlook are still expecting the economy to slow to a virtual standstill, maybe not slip into a recession, but slow to a standstill. But looking at the National Association of Business Economics and their economists that they survey, well more than half expect a recession to be coming, even if it is mild. So that frames some of our outlook as we look forward, particularly because the recession could be occurring in 2024. That affects what we would expect for FY '25, particularly the housing market, which we have a lag. Our activity is set about a year and a half as far as property taxes prior to the fiscal year. So we're concerned, yes, about FY '24, but also perhaps a little bit more about FY '25. So let's take a step back and look at the adopted budget and see what the structure of the budget is. In FY '23, you adopted a budget that was $8.5 billion. About $3.4 billion is the operating budget where our services are funded. That's about 39% of the total. You'll notice the biggest areas are capital, about $2 billion. The majority of that is carry-forward money that capital projects take a while to build, and so the unspent money carries forward into a year. Reserves are about $1.6 billion. Transfers, which are accounting mechanisms to move dollars from one governmental fund to a different governmental fund, are about $1.5 billion. And this looks at that operating section of about $3.3 billion and breaks it out by category. The first three categories, which are the sheriff, enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, and solid waste, as well as fire rescue, that's 37% of that operating budget in those areas. So public safety and our utilities account for more than a third of that operating budget. As Bonnie mentioned, where you have the most discretion as a board regarding spending is in our general funds, our countywide general fund and unincorporated area general fund. So we'll take a look at those in a little more detail. The countywide general fund, fund services for all Hillsborough residents, whether they're in the unincorporated area or in one of the cities, one of the three cities. Those things are the sheriff's jail operations, clerk of court operations, human services, affordable housing, pet resources, medical services. Those are all provided by the county, even in the three cities. And that's done with an operating millage of 5.7309 mils, which is about $1,146 on a home with an assessed value of $250,000. In FY '23, the countywide general fund was almost $1.3 billion. Reserves were about $268 million. And then this looks at some of the major areas that are funded by the countywide general fund. And those first two, the sheriff, which again is primarily the jail and court operations, his law enforcement operations are funded in the unincorporated area fund. So the sheriff's countywide operations and other constitutionals and agencies account for about 55% of the countywide general fund. All the other areas under the county administrator you see are a good bit smaller. Human services at $66 million. We have affordable housing at $40 million, conservation and parks at $21 million. Also in there, you see our tax increment financing. That's where we've pledged a portion of the growth in property taxes to community redevelopment areas in the three cities. The unincorporated area fund. The unincorporated area fund funds services that are municipal-related. So these are the types of services that if you lived in Tampa or Plant City or Temple Terrace, your city government would provide these services. Things like law enforcement patrol operations would be provided by the city police departments, but in the unincorporated areas, provided by the sheriff. Fire rescue services also are municipal-type services in the unincorporated area general fund. Parks and recreation, code enforcement. And in this fund, the operating millage is lower, a little bit more than 4.37 mils, and that's about $875 on that $250,000 home. And that millage rate is lower than the three cities, and we'll talk more about that in a slide upcoming. Here's a look at what the unincorporated area general fund does fund, $692 million. The first two, fire rescue and the sheriff, so again, public safety, that accounts for 73% of the expenditures, operating expenditures in this fund. That's $417 million for public safety, which, by the way, exceeds the property tax for the unincorporated area fund, which is about $368 million. So those two alone exceed the property tax. The unincorporated fund also benefits from state revenue sharing and the state shared half-cent sales tax. And so those enable us to flesh out the unincorporated fund. But of course, those are sales tax-type items which are susceptible to recession and more volatile. But this is the fund that we've had more difficulty over the years in keeping up with And that growth then has put more demands on fire rescue. A previous fire rescue master plan identified the need for about 25 new stations. Most of that was to deal with current demands, not really growth. There's transportation issues, parks as population increases, and certainly the demand for parks and park services increases, and of course, law enforcement officers. The sheriff is looking to keep up with sheriff deputies per population, and that then creates additional calls on the unincorporated area fund. The unincorporated area is about 1 million people compared to about 500,000 for the other, the three cities combined. And here, we're looking at the millage rate in that second graph. Our millage rate, you see on the right, 4.37. The three cities, two of them are above 6, and one of them is at about 5.7. So they have a good bit smaller populations, but they fund their municipal services on a substantially higher millage rate than what municipal services are funded with in the So as we look at FY '24 and as Bonnie builds her recommended budget, which will be coming to you on July 12, we look at a number of different things and issues that we know that are out there. Some of the considerations in FY '24 are estimated ad valorem growth, in other words, property tax growth, 14.5%. We also are cognizant that while FY '24 is challenging, particularly with inflation and cost increases and wage increases, FY '25 could be even more challenging because in that year, we could see more pressure on revenue than we are seeing in FY '24. So we take FY '24 decisions in careful consideration when we think about FY '25. So what that means is that we look carefully at ongoing commitments, particularly new ongoing commitments, and put them through a small funnel. Potential uses of growth and funding. We concentrate on things we know we need to do, things like the constitutional officer requests, which they're also experiencing strong inflationary pressures and wage pressures. And so we are getting some strong growth in those requests. Mandates, things like that tax increment financing that I mentioned, commissions that go to the property appraiser and to the tax collector. There's also state mandates that we have to meet as far as what the legislature passes. Inflation and cost escalations that we talked about, compensation, union contracts, reserve maintenance. The board has a policy to maintain 20% to 25% reserves in the general funds combined. And then we have department requests. Here, again, even though we have strong growth in revenue, we have strong cost pressures. And so that limits our ability to approve large numbers of department requests, particularly those that have ongoing cost or service expansions. And then, of course, we have commissioner priorities. The community investment tax. Here are some options that we're looking at for the community investment tax. Remember that the community investment tax, of course, is a sales surtax, a half a percent. It can be only used for capital, for the construction of these types of items. It does expire at the end of November of 2026. But here, again, cost increases and inflation. Our CIP is experiencing pretty heavy cost pressures. It's difficult to buy material. It's difficult sometimes even to find contractors. And you know, if you want to have them, you need to pay for them. And so we're looking at keeping our current CIP whole. We have the jail major maintenance program. Last year, the board committed and funded $10 million to the jail maintenance program. That's where the sheriff is modernizing the pod system that the jails have. We funded $10 million, which was to fund about four of those pods, but that's also experiencing cost pressures. And so we are continuing with that pace of about $10 million a year. Public safety operation complex improvements could be another item. Bonnie and we have discussed, you know, the need for better facilities, particularly when the emergency operations center is activated and people are sometimes staying overnight and having better facilities to accommodate that. Transportation, resurfacing sidewalks, bridges, et cetera, new fire stations. We did a new fire station in FY '23 using CIT that could be also in the future. Medical examiner improvements, there's parks, the African-American Cultural Center, Upper Tampa Bay Trail. These are all items that, you know, we have heard you, the board, discuss and place some priorities on. And so these are items that we're considering in the recommended budget for community investment And then this is looking at our reserve analysis. I mentioned, of course, the board has the 20% to 25% policy. In FY '23, we were at about 24.6%. The important thing there is that the countywide reserves were about 27%, the unincorporated area about 20.5%. Once again, it's the unincorporated area that has the most challenges. We'll talk a little bit more about ratings in a moment. $2 billion capital budget. Here, water wastewater facilities account for about half of that $2 billion. About 55% of it, or a little bit more than a billion, is carry-forward funding. The new funding of about $866 billion, the primary source there is future bond issues of about $500 million. How about positions? This graph looks at county administrator positions from FY '07 through FY '23. You can see a dip. There was, during the Great Recession, we declined from about 6,600 to about 5,000 in FY '12, and it has risen again to about 6,000, and it was 6,600. And so we're still down below. We're at about four positions per 1,000 population in '23 compared to about 5.607. But let's look a little further and look at fire rescue-only positions over that same time. Here's a case where, you know, there's been a concerted effort to try to look at where we could expand fire rescue operations or shore them up in order to keep response times in good order. And so we, and the board, has purposely increased staffing here, and we are above where we were at FY '07. But in FY '07, it was 0.8 fire rescue positions per 1,000. And interestingly, in FY '23, it's also 0.8 per 1,000. But it has gone up with population. And then finally, this graph takes a look at county administrators excluding those fire rescue positions. And in FY '06 or FY '07, we were at 5,700, and in FY '23, we're at 4,800. So we're about 900 below. And on a per capita basis, in FY '07, it was 4.8 positions per 1,000, and now it's 3.2 per 1,000. So the county administrator and staff have certainly tried to look for efficiencies and good stewardship of a dollar. Turning back to ratings, we do have AAA ratings from all three agencies on our general obligation bonds. Those are supported by property taxes. Those are supported by what is going on in our general funds and our reserve levels and things like that. We also have strong ratings in our enterprise fund ratings, our water wastewater bonds, our AA+ to AAA. That is important as we come up and have some new bond issues that are in the pipeline in order to support increased capacity for water wastewater, particularly in South County. This allows us to have better access to financial markets at lower rates, and sometimes even just the ability to have funds available. The AAA and those high ratings are important when it comes to that. The triple A and those high ratings are important when it comes to that. These are a few comments from rating agencies looking at our general obligation as to why we are AAA rating. They mentioned that we have sound policies, we have low long-term debt burdens, we have a history, because that feeds into what the property appraiser does in August in order to get those trim notices to all of us. And then we have two required public hearings by state law. Those will occur in September. On the 14th, you'll adopt the tentative budget and millage, millages. And on September 21st, you'll adopt the final budget and millages. Also on September 21st, there is a capital improvement pro, program, public hearing as well at the same time where you'll adopt the CIP. With that, I, I thank you and I'm available for comments or questions.
I thank you, Kevin, for that very detailed and thorough budget overview. Do we have any comments or questions from board members on either what he presented today or the process moving forward?
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this. It's a kind of a little depressing listening to you talk. It's kind of like you can see on the horizon problems that this board's going to be facing and boards after me. And we don't have the benefit of just printing money, right? We have to make hard decisions, it looks like. The, when you showed that pro forma and you were showing that surplus, you said you're assuming that it's a steady state, but that never happens, right?
That's correct. That's, things, every year, new decisions are made and we get new estimates on revenues and things like that. And so we end up budget, by law, balancing our budgets.
Gotcha. And, and part of what you, what you showed on one of the charts showed commissioner priorities. And I, I'm really just curious, how, how is that determined commissioner priorities? Is it something that we, this is a real question as a new commissioner, could you elaborate on that?
Well, one way that it's done is that we, during the budget process, we usually have a few one-on-one meetings with commissioners where, where Bonnie, Tom and myself visit each of you. We hear about your concerns and priorities that way. We also hear about your concerns and priorities during regular board meetings, and we also hear about them in workshops like this, and particularly also in the budget reconciliation public hearing in July.
Okay. And Bonnie, part of what you put together, so as far as recommendations to us as, as a board on some of the tough decisions we may have to make, is that part of this process throughout, does that happen sooner than later, or could you let me know how that would work?
So we find these workshops invaluable. And as Kevin mentioned, we listen to what you all are saying during each board meeting so that we don't have surprises when you talk about certain things that you're hearing from your own constituents. We try to incorporate that as best we can within the parameters. We give the budget, when we present it to you in July, it's based on the best information that we have at the time. But we do get additional information throughout the summer, especially from the property appraiser's office, and as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. That's why there's always that reconciliation that has to occur in the summertime period.
Great, great. And then it seems like what's upcoming is tougher than the years past. A lot of that probably has to do with relief fact dollars that we got. Does that have anything, is that coming into play with funds that we've received, or is that? It just seems like this year is a tougher year than ever before, is the way I'm looking at it, unless I'm just being dramatic here.
So if I can answer that a little bit.
Yeah.
I, I can't say every year seems tough and it's for its own reason.
Sure.
I'm not sure if this is tougher than a, a different year. We are, I will say, you know, to be the glass half full. We are fortunate that at least our property values are expected to increase 14 and a half percent. But the inflationary pressures are enormous. And that probably is more than we have seen in prior years, and that is affecting every capital project. As Kevin mentioned, it is affecting wages and all of that is having a compounding effect.
No doubt about it. Like our road builders and everybody, they have to pay their, you can't pay $15 an hour anymore. It's 24, 25 bucks an hour to, to keep people. So, so I get that. In, in the CIT, I know I've spoken to you, Bonnie, about that. I mean, it expires in 2026, but we do have the possibility to look at that sooner than later next year. That is a possibility?
Yes, we do. What the recommendations we have before you today are for this CIT because we're finally at a point where we have some pay-as-you-go dollars, as we did it in the budget year that we're in. And so that's the, what we have, those items for consideration for this CIT.
Great, great. Well, I appreciate staff and everybody and your patience with me through this process. And thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolstall.
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm not as pessimistic about it. I feel like, you know, in 2008, Florida got it the second worst any other state, and I believe it's going to be the direct opposite this time around. I believe that. I believe Hillsborough County is going to be just fine. I, you know, like the consumer price index is, I mean, you have to, you're a professional in your field and you have to operate with what the standards are, but it's basically fake. I mean, real aggregate inflation is probably at least minimum of 15% right now and nothing, nothing less in my opinion. But, you know, that's, that's fine, it's kind of irrelevant. I would say that, I would say that it's too early, especially since I haven't seen Bonnie's first draft. So I'll reserve like 99.9% of my comments that I have. I will say that to my fellow commissioners that I believe that there's more opportunity in this budget than one might realize. I've, I've done so much research, I've read statements from bond councils through 2016 that have come and presented this board. And I, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to be found, but it's kind of meaningless for me to talk to all of you about it right now since we don't have the, um, the draft budget in front of us. So thank you very much. It's, um, it was an, it's an insightful report. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Couple of comments that I'll make, just piggybacking on both, on what both Commissioner Owen and Commissioner Wolstall said. You know, when you talk to home builders and other folks that, that are in markets outside of Florida and, and throughout the country, they'll tell you that Florida, particularly Tampa, is holding up remarkably well. Heard it from an economist with the EDC, I guess a couple of months ago, and said, yes, recession is looming, there will be a pullback, but for Tampa, Hillsborough County, it, you know, will be impacted, but we shouldn't face the brunt that perhaps the rest of the country's going to face. At least that's what the folks that I'm talking to are, are saying. That being said, to kind of expound on what Commissioner Owen was saying, I am, having gone through a couple of recessions here, you know, as the old timer, I mean, I can tell you that I'm supremely confident in our ability to, to make the difficult budget decisions. When you go back to '07, I mean, we literally eliminated 1,600 positions, we cut our spending by a billion, over a billion dollars. And you know what? We did it without rating reserves. And the state of Florida and most other governmental jurisdictions either rated reserves, rated trust funds, and that's why they got hit real hard with downgrades on their, on their ratings. But we held up remarkably well. And having gone through that, I, and, and knowing that the expertise we have in our staff with Bonnie and Tom and, and Kevin here, that, you know, should the worst happen, I'm confident that, that, you know, with the expertise we have in making sound conservative financial decisions that we've made in the past. I mean, years ago, we were the first government to implement a, a spending cap. You know, those things never get, never get talked about. So I'm confident that should the dark days come, that we'll, we'll, we'll hold up fairly well. One thing that Commissioner Owen touched on it as far as the CIT, and I think at some point, the board will have a discussion on the timing of reauthorization of that. But one thing that I think that we should probably consider is doing a, a capital needs assessment. I mean, we know we have the fire master plan, we know for, for some other areas where we need, but to really have a true understanding of the needs, I think will help us in crafting and moving forward on that. So I'll just kind of toss that out there for, for future, future discussion and we can go down that path whenever we think it's fit. I think that's about all I've got right now. Any other real comments, questions? Or Bonnie, do you want to add anything else?
And thank you. I, I know this is a lot of material to absorb and certainly, you know, you don't need to hold and provide your comments till after I provide the July budget. As much as you can provide to me beforehand, that will help us better implement the recommended budget and prepare that for you. Thank you.
Yeah, and then, you know, has been, has been reflected on the slide here. Bonnie will make her, her recommended budget, but then we'll have opportunities, whether it's at the reconciliation workshop or the public hearings, or we can make, make changes or additions or any changes that we want to make at that time. So, but certainly whatever information we can provide to her in advance of that will help her in crafting a recommended budget. With that, we don't have any other questions or comments. We're adjourned.